I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a very nice item at the very beginning of our business meeting tonight. As many of you know who are attendants here, that from August 2017 until the present, we have been able to display the artwork of so many of our talented students. The artwork is displayed in several buildings, and each year we like to recognize those students for their talent as well as their willingness to let us display their work. So that's going to be our first item tonight, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming out tonight. It's really nice to see such a great crowd here, and we're really excited about recognizing your students for their accomplishments and the artwork. The walls are a little barren now at Central Office. For those who don't know, we do this twice a year, in the fall and the spring. It's really nice to see, from, you know, the early grades in kindergarten through high school, just the amazing accomplishments of our kids. It's really, it's really beautiful. Tonight, as Dr. Sorenson said, we're here to celebrate your children, to celebrate you kids and the amazing artwork that you do. So in a moment, I will be coming up to the center here. We'll have you come up, and Ms. Hunt from the school committee will be reading your names, and we have a certificate for you, okay? So hold on one second, and we'll meet you in the front.
This is so Dr. Campbell won't mess up the names. All right, from Federal Furnace Elementary School, Gabrielle Allen. Federal Furnace, Troy Chase. Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Mia Bella Bona. Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Orianna Fork. And Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Dylan Barry. Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Jacob Novak. Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Aiden May. Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Reed Morgan. Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Andrew Healy. And Nathaniel Morton Elementary School, Madeline Tavares. Sorry, my cousin. Cold Spring Elementary School, Maxwell Joseph. Cold Spring Elementary School, Stella McCabe. Cold Spring Elementary School, Sadie Cusman. Manomet Elementary School, Philip Rand. Manomet Elementary School, Lillian Warren. Manomet Elementary School, Griffin Martin. Manomet Elementary School, Noah Basette. Manomet Elementary School, Brayden Ennis. Okay, South Elementary School, Grace Stewart. South Elementary School, Ronan Slazus. South Elementary School, Quinn Mace. South Elementary School, Cameron Sass. West Elementary School, Shaylin Rose. West Elementary School, Coral Lomali. West Elementary School, Miranda Willette. West Elementary School, Kaylee Eldridge. West Elementary School, Grace Sizmar. Indian Brook Elementary, Brooke Barton. Plymouth South Middle School, Cameron Santino. Plymouth South Middle School, Morgan Savoy. Plymouth South Middle School, Fenola Marini. Plymouth Community Intermediate School, Ava Whiting. PCIS, Aiden Keegan. PCIS, Noel Schneider. PCIS, Mackenzie Whiting. Plymouth North High School, Stephanie Ward. Plymouth North High School, Samantha Stickney. Plymouth North High School, Brock Mento. And Plymouth North High School, Kaitlyn Sylvester.
So again, thank you very much. Congratulations to all the students, and thank you for sharing your children with us. It's a joy, and we look forward to continuing to see the artwork coming in to Central Office. Not that we want you to leave, but should you choose, I know that there's some refreshments out there waiting for you. So again, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Good job. Good job. Thank you.
Becky, Becky, my sister took one.
I haven't heard of anything.
I'm going to have to change my address, too. I don't know if my place has changed.
Yeah, yeah. We have kids I couldn't, I couldn't serve.
Did you see him? I didn't even see him sit down.
No, he didn't.
Oh, yeah, there he is.
Oh, you got it. Thank you.
Do it. You can go.
I'm like, give me a hug. She's like, no. Do I have to?
She's my, she's my, like, favorite.
Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to speak to the school committee? Please come forward and identify yourself.
My name is Bob Betters. I'm appearing tonight in my capacity as president of the Plymouth Education Foundation. I've usually come in front of the school committee to extend a personal invitation to the school committee members, to school department staff, and the general public to the Education Foundation Gala. This year is our eighth Education Foundation Gala. I have some, I have some extra invitations here. You probably already, yeah, I think, hopefully you would have gotten them in the mail. I have some spare ones for people who may not have received them. But this year's gala is being held on Saturday, February 10th, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. It's at the Hotel 1620, which was also for the venue last year. It's a black tie optional event, dinner, auction, and dancing. Been well attended previously by the school committee, by the school department, and others in town. We've got three event sponsors this year: Rockland Trust Charitable Foundation, Redbrook, which is an AD makepeace company, and Speakman Excavating. Reservations can be made on our website, which is www.plymoutheducationfoundation.org. Tickets this year are $100 per person, or $725 for a table of eight. You can also contact my office at 508-747-3545 to confirm reservations, or send a check-in for tickets as well. The Adelmann Freddie Excellence in Education this award is being presented this year to Bob Hollis. Sure, all of you know Bob Hollis and what he's done in terms of his multiple contributions to the town, but he will be honored at this year's gala. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but again, I'm just here to extend a personal invitation.
Mr. Betters, thank you very much for coming in and extending that invitation.
Thank you.
Just want to note that the card had a different email address on it than the one that you just read, I think.
Oh, yeah, I think that I, that...
You see, it says Seaborn@WillingtonandBetters.com.
Yeah, that, the C. Osborne@WillingtonandBetters.com is a contact person in my office who can, who can also, you can also basically provide you with that information as well. But the website, you can purchase tickets right on the website, you can use PayPal right on the website, so it can be done right on the website. But I know some people still like to, still like to use old school, so you can contact my office at the phone number indicated, or email Cody Osborne, who is one of my staff.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight. And the next thing on our agenda is our student representatives, and we can start tonight with Ruby, because she was first here.
So we have our students, from Plymouth North, obviously, going to Boston for Model UN. It is Thursday, January 25th through Sunday, January 28th. Through role-playing and simulation, students will represent major governmental organizations, including North Atlantic Treaty Organization, the World Court, and the Organizations of America. And we also have our eighth-grade orientation coming up for incoming Plymouth North High School students. It will be held Tuesday, January 30th at 6:30 p.m. And during the open house, parents and current eighth-grade students can attend North, that are going to be attending North in the fall, will be able to take a tour of the building, receive an academic overview from the department heads, be introduced to the freshman academy, and learn about clubs and sports offered. We also have our local scholarship applications for seniors. So if you are interested in looking at that, you can go to students' Naviance accounts, and the deadline is February 1st. Our semester ends today, Monday, January 22nd, and second semester will begin tomorrow, January 23rd. Report cards will be distributed this Friday, January 26th. Our cap and gown sale is starting now. They, or they will begin on February 1st and run through February 16th. Orders can be placed before or after school in Ms. Allen's room 331. The cost is $25. Check or money order only made payable to PNHS SAF. We also have our Poetry Out Loud competition coming up. It's our second year participating in the poetry competition. The competition encourages students to learn about poetry through memorization and recitation. As students explore and perform poems, they develop and strengthen their interpretation and public speaking skills, they build self-confidence, and deepen their understanding of our rich literary heritage. The competition will take place on January 29th at 7:00 p.m. in the Plymouth North Learning Commons, and we have about 20 students who have done well enough in their classrooms who will be able to recite these in front of a larger audience. We also have a new club called Empty Bowls, and they will be holding their first workshop tomorrow after school in room 128. It'll run from 2:15 to 4:00. And we also have our AP Information Night, which is Thursday, February 8th at Plymouth South, and the meeting will include both Plymouth North and Plymouth South guidance departments. And we also have DECA coming up, which it was rescheduled to Thursday, February 1st. And we also have had a very successful math team. They have gone undefeated, and they hope for some distinction this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabella.
I'm going to start with our National Honor Society induction, which took place last Thursday. Eighty-eight new members were inducted into our chapter at Plymouth South High School. The ceremony was highlighted with the induction of our honorary member, Chef Barry Levy, from our culinary department. Our mid-year exams and semester final exams are finally completed today, as makeup exams took place this morning. Feedback from both the students and the staff will be gathered to determine the most effective process for implementing the mid-year exams next year and the final exams coming up, as we had a shortened exam block this year. Our second semester starts tomorrow, and our report cards will be distributed on Monday, January 29th. And the deadline to add or drop classes for our Semester Two will be January 31st. February 1st is our date for the annual tech expo, which is held in our gymnasium, and it's followed that evening by the Grade Eight Parent Night, which will present our academic programs, as well as the freshman academy, to incoming freshmen. Our tech expo will host all the Grade Seventh and Eighth students in the whole district to visit the tech exhibits from both of our high schools. Our local scholarship applications for seniors are due February 1st as well through our guidance and Naviance departments. And the Advanced Placement Student Breakfast will take place on February 7th to honor over 300 students enrolled in various AP courses offered at our school. Our winter captains breakfast took place last week at Plymouth South High School, and guest speaker Ryan Donovan addressed the group on his experiences as a captain at South. This event each season is a highlight for our captains at both schools to enjoy the morning together. It presents an opportunity for them to meet one another, or get a chance to chat with some teammates that they haven't seen since youth sports. The breakfast aims to build respect and sportsmanship within our two schools. I'd like to finish up by congratulating our boys' ice hockey team, who qualified for the state tourney with a win this past weekend. Our boys hold an impressive 10-1-1 record heading into this week. I'd like to also congratulate the girls and boys indoor track, 4x50, meet all shutter relay teens, as the boys received a second-place medal and the girls qualified for Nationals. Our boys also earned medals in the long jump and high jumps at the meet this past Saturday. Thank you, guys.
Okay, just want to pass along to you, you both mentioned the scholarship applications that are due on the first. I just want to remind you, and you can pass it back, that in years past, those applications weren't top quality, and the scholarship committee now is looking for applications from seniors that are final draft, top quality. So it's important to finish those off, correct spelling, correct punctuation, not written in pencil, because that's what they're going to be looking for now. Okay? Great. Thank you very much.
I was just going to say the same thing.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. You want to say it?
Yeah. All right.
I just, I just want to mention that Rich Habbert from the newspaper is here on his birthday.
He's our biggest fan.
Our third student representative, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, old business, committee members with old business to bring up? Anything from the old business list to reference this evening? How about new business?
I would, I would just mention that, if you recall, at our last selectmen's meeting, there was a request for a sort of a reactivation of the consolidation. Well, I shouldn't say reactivation. There was a consolidation committee that met in 2010 and carried over into 2011. Ms. Burgess served as vice chair. I've had the opportunity to resurrect all those minutes and read all those minutes from 2010 and 2011. If anybody's interested, I have copies for you all to read, and I only bring that up because it was referenced at the last selectmen's meeting that are probably going to be revisiting consolidation. Anything else under new business?
Okay. Superintendent's report. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. As everyone can see, Dr. Miestis is not here, as he mentioned his last, at the last meeting. He is in the Dominican Republic with Life Touch, our photo company, volunteering as they look to build a school in a needy village where he's been staying. So last Friday, we had the opportunity, many of us had the opportunity to do a Facebook Live with Dr. Miestis from the Dominican Republic, answering any questions that students may have, that some of our teachers and administrators have. He's doing well. He's been profoundly impacted by the need there and the work that's been done, so we look forward to hearing his report when he comes back and wish him well as he returns this Wednesday. Another opportunity we've mentioned in the past, China immersion program, which we started this year. We started, recently started a relationship with an organization called Mass Education International that works on building this relationship, particularly with the United States and China. Given that, we have opportunity to not only have students go to China this April at our high schools, which we're very excited about, and we have some students that have already expressed interest, but we also have a number of students who will be coming here at the end of this month, January 28th through February 1st. So we're currently placing some students from China in host families, so it just, once again, anyone out there that may be interested in hosting a student for a few days, they would be attending school with our high school students, getting a schedule, a model schedule to really get a feel for what it's like in the school within the United States, particularly in Plymouth. So if anyone's interested, please contact me at Central Office, and I'd be happy to relay the information to you, or you can also contact your high school principal. You may have noticed that, or not, that Mr. Capel was not here for the VPA celebration, which he usually is, but he is busy right now picking up some teachers from the Plymouth College of Art, from Plymouth, U.K., as we are getting ready to have a two-week opportunity of professional development with some professors, some, excuse me, some instructors from the College of Art, coming here not only to work with our teachers, but to work with our students as well. You may have mentioned, recalled when we talked about this banner project that we're doing and getting ready for the 400th anniversary of Plymouth. All of our schools have been partnered with a school in the U.K. Those schools will be working on this banner project with our 12 schools, and these, these teachers from the College of Art are coming here to start that process, you know, in person. So we look forward to welcoming them this evening. I think they landed about an hour and a half ago, and they'll be here, as I said, they'll be here for the next two weeks. As was mentioned by the student rep from South High School, we had a beautiful National Honor Society induction last Thursday at Plymouth South High School. It was really nice. Mrs. Frye and I were commenting on having it in the auditorium, the performing arts center. It was just really, it really added a level of sophistication to it and formality, which was really nice. It was wonderful to see over 80 students, as was mentioned, be inducted for not only their grades, but for the service that they've done in the community and the participation in their school. So it was really nice. On Saturday, we had a great turnout for the Plymouth Family Network, hosted a very successful early childhood fair. I know that some folks here were there. I missed people in passing, but it was a great event. We had hundreds, literally hundreds of families turn out for that, very successful. I think it was the 21st anniversary of that fair. So it was a great opportunity for families within the community to see what kind of resources are out there for our youngest families, not only for preschool programs, but for just general resources throughout Plymouth. It was a great, a great, great event. As you all know, we had some challenges with snow and ice last week, but overall, everything went very smoothly, thanks to Arthur Montron and the facilities department. Things really went, were handled very well. Related to that, as was mentioned by one of our student reps, with that school delay last week that we had due to the ice, high school exams needed to be shifted. So we had, originally had two exams scheduled for that day, and we had to do some adjustments so those exams get carried over to the makeup day, which then in turn carried over to today. So we actually have shifted consequently the term by one day. So in fact, the term ended today, the new term ends, excuse me, begins tomorrow, and report cards, because of that, will not go out on Friday, but they will go out a week from today, on Monday, January 29th, and that will be communicated home by the buildings to the schools. So there's a one-day delay for that because of that trickle-down. And then lastly, the Department of Education has been on-site today, and they'll be on-site this week as they complete their coordinated program review. Things have been going very well so far, not only before their arrival, but during their visit here today, and we look forward to the remaining days to highlight the great things that are going on in our school district, and look forward to having our exit interview with them on Thursday afternoon. And that is all I have for this evening.
Questions for Dr. Campbell on his report. Just perhaps a minor clarification. We were talking about host families a few moments ago.
Yes.
Those, those students from China will be going to Plymouth South High School?
Those students, not necessarily. For this visit, we are welcoming them to both Plymouth North and Plymouth South High School.
So the host family can be from either district?
Yes, we did this last year, and we're going to do it the same way. So we do have some families that have shown interest in North and South, and they will, they will shadow their own children for the day. We do have some folks from the middle schools have also expressed interest, and some of our educators have also expressed interest in hosting. We have about 36 students that are actually visiting us, so about 18 will be at each school for those four days, really three and a half.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Our retirements, Ms. Frye.
Yes, we have three retirements this evening. Linda Gigliotti, who's a moderate special needs teacher, 21 years of service at Cold Spring Elementary. Robert Singer, also at Cold Spring Elementary School psychologist for 32 years of service. And Stephen Silva, second shift custodian, 22 years of service with Plymouth North High School.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt.
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, we thank these individuals for their combined 75 years of service and wish them a happy retirement.
Thank you. Correspondence. Mr. Morgan.
Okay, we have several correspondents this evening. We have three letters from science coordinator Allison Riordan. One to Diane Lancaster of Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, also one to Andrea Halloran, also at the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital. And then we also have a, those two letters are thanking them for a visit regards to the biomedical students. Then we also have another letter from Allison Riordan to Shar Heller at the Southwest, Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance, and thank them very much for the donation of the cocoons to the elementary classrooms across the district. And then last but not least, we have a correspondence from J.D.R.F. to PCIS, thanking them for the donation of $200 regarding type 1 diabetes research.
Thank you. I was, I was hoping you'd try to pronounce the name of those cocoons, but you skipped right over.
I didn't want to butcher it.
All right.
Do you want to try it?
Okay, next item is mid-cycle. Dr. Campbell.
Yes, this evening we have Principal Palladino and his school council here, who'll be presenting the mid-cycle review for their school improvement plan. the mid-cycle review for their school improvement plan.
All right, thank you for having us, I'm just going to introduce everyone, so you know who's at the table right now, they're all part of the school improvement plan, and then we have our math specialists and literacy specialists here to just give some information around data and where we're at, so I'm going to start. Mrs. Lewis is the assistant principal in Gemini House, Mr. Foley is in Mercury House, Jackie Gervais is our literacy specialist, Lisa Murray is our math specialist, and Rick Cudmore is a parent rep from our school council. Behind me I have Kerry Cameron as well, Paul Capozzi, who was going to be here to present, but he is sick, he called us, emailed us earlier, so he couldn't make it, so Rick is going to fill in there for Paul's report. So this is a mid-cycle review of our two-year school improvement plan, as you know, it's January, so we're actually like a quarter through our mid-cycle review, but we've done a lot and we want to report, we have enough to report out on what we've been doing, we're going to share responsibilities here tonight, I think, we all know if I start going, we'll be here all night, so I think the easiest way to resolve that is to have other people speak for me. All right. All right, goal one, as I, when I presented this last year, we talked about the importance of good technology, using, good use of technology, because one of the things we've learned is technology is part of our students' world, and instead of saying, "You can't use it, don't use it," it's how do you use it and make sure we're educating them on the appropriate use in being good cyber citizens. So I'm going to turn this goal over to Mrs. Lewis. Should be on.
This year, we have continued with some of the assemblies that we have had in the past, help educate students on how to be responsible cyber citizens and how to be responsible school citizens as well. We've continued to integrate this information in the health classes as well. In the past, we have had the SRO also present in the health classes, unfortunately, our SRO was injured on Thanksgiving, it has not returned to us yet. New this year, we educated our staff with some professional development on how to support our LGBTQ students that we are now seeing more of at the middle school level as well. We also have students participating with the high school students in the New England Patriots Game Changer Grant, and they will be going up to North High School this week. And I will let the students speak further about the sticker poster program later in the presentation. Our goal, of course, is to educate students, so we want them to be in school, so looking at our suspension data is important, and if you look at our data, we are about at the midway point for this year, our number of OSS is down, and our ISS is about probably the same as it would have been at the mid-year point last year. More importantly, our number of repeat offenders is down, and that asterisk is there because that is the same student that has been a repeat OSS and ISS offender, but that data is way down from the year before. And our number of bullying incidents, then that is after we have investigated and has matched the definition of bullying, the things that we have coded in Aspen as bullying is down, so far, we've had none this year.
Okay, I was going to talk a little bit too about the ADA assemblies, last week, we actually had the assistant district attorney in to meet with our kids to talk about being safe when online and when using technology, so they not only met with our students throughout the day, they actually spent that night meeting with families, and we could talk a little bit about that as, as we move on. Goal two, this is a goal from last year, where we wanted to target our high-needs population as far as getting them involved in the schools, so we, we looked at our EL families and our grandparents actively participating in their grandchildren's lives group, and I'm going to turn it over to actually Mr. Cudmore to start with the grandparent group.
One of the things is that Plymouth has a pretty good number of students where grandparents are the primary caregivers, as well as we have a lot of families where grandparents are actively involved, so it only makes sense to involve them in what we're doing as well. And the grandparents face different challenges due to the generation gap, such as, you know, what is going on with social media, technology, et cetera, and quite often, there's also trauma involved and other issues going on around the family unit that, you know, we're seeing as well. One of the issues that we could also see is that students and the grandparents may prefer not to be identified, so that can sometimes cause some issues, and, you know, having us do some, a little, little more work in being able to identify them, so to be able to better support the families, you know, we need to learn about their needs, open new lines of communication, and offer resources to assist. And some of the things that we've done over, you know, the first part of this, this year is we've looked at expanding the networking to the district elementary and high schools, because, you know, the grandparents are raising children not only, you know, in the middle schools, but also in all the other schools, so we've expanded, you know, out to that, started working in collaboration with various community clubs, such as the YMCA and the COA and the, you know, boys and girls clubs as well, to include, you know, the grandparents that are actively involved in, with their grandchildren. So we've provided information to those grandparents on opening day, and we have an ongoing database for, you know, grandparents as well. There's also been a number of, you know, presentations that have included, you know, grandparents as well as families to provide information, as Mr. Palladino just said, that the Plymouth District Attorney's Office was out talking about social media, and we've involved the grandparents with them as well. Couple of future presentations that we're looking at is the adolescent brain, what's happening with that, and trauma-based information as well. I think that's.
And we, just to look at some, some data, so we have 22 grandparents in our network right now that we regularly communicate with, and that's important, it's not just the stuff that we're providing, but since I've, we've started this group and this organization really publicizing what we're doing, I will get emails from other organizations that are looking to target the grandparent population, so I easily just can send an email blast out to those, to that, to that, the network that we have of information that's out there in the community, so, you know, if anybody's watching and they, you know, they are raising their grandchildren, I mean, I'm opening it up to people outside of Plymouth, because I think, you know, we need to support this, this growing population, so they can contact me at PCIS and I can add them to our email chain. And then just some feedback from some of the families that have come to our, our nightly activities at, at PCIS, you know, talking about how informative it was, the information was engaging and useful, a lot of the comments I heard was how much things have changed since they raised their, their children, and I would say, just even as a father, things have changed, when my son was very little till now, there's so much more out there, and it's difficult to actually keep up with what's happening with technology. And the same thing with, with prevention and substance abuse, they spent a large, when Karen, Tracy Wojcicki came, she spent a lot of time talking about vaping, and I know that's a, something that's out there that's changed since, you know, even when I was growing up, so there's, that, that whole piece is a huge concern, not only in the community of substance abuse, but also for parents, so she spent a lot of time with that. So the, the feedback was positive, we had about nine families that showed up for the Karen Treatment Center presentation, we had about 20 for the ADA that came to talk about social media and technology, so we were happy with that, the amount of people that came to that one, so. Our EL population, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Foley, Mr. Foley is the assistant principal in Mercury House, and that is the house where our EL students are placed to work with his teachers.
Good evening. I feel when we're looking at this population, there are two parts to it, there are the students and then the families. When we're speaking to, engaging the students, our focus there would be the teachers and them receiving their SEI endorsement, most of our teachers in Mercury have that endorsement or are working towards receiving that endorsement currently. I think a focus for this goal was to expand our communication and engage in the families of this population, beyond just translating documents that are going home in backpacks or emails. Ms. Burick, who is our teacher, who oversees this program, has done a very good job of expanding that communication, she currently has a Facebook page, she communicates regularly with her parents through Remind and Facebook Messenger apps. Ms. Burick and Mr. Palladino attended a Brazilian church service, which invite, Mr. Palladino invited all the families to open house, we saw one of our highest-attended open houses this past fall with this population. In addition to utilizing Ms. Burick, we've also been utilizing the services of Mari Costa, who is the district translator, we use her to help us translate documents and letters to specific students, also, she's been attending a lot of our special ed, IEP and 504 meetings in assistance with that communication with the families. So I think a big part of this has been that communication with home, and we've seen that home-family connection with the school grow this year by expanding the communication piece.
So we, we did go out in the beginning of the year to talk about the fall open houses and those type of things that we're doing, and we do plan to go back out into the community again to talk about the end-of-the-year activities, like the awards nights, the dinner dances, all the stuff that happened, you know, the Olympics, so our plan is to go out into that, into the community again, to meet with them, and again, communicate what's happening towards the end of the year, so that was very successful. Goal three is our academic goal, so I'm going to turn it over in a minute to Jackie Gervais to talk about ELA, but what we've done is we've created job-embedded data teams, so essentially what happened, what happened a few weeks ago is Jackie with ELA teachers, reading teachers, and special education teachers actually dissected the data that we got back from MCAS, and she's going to report on that, but we spent a lot of time looking at it, but not only looking at, but what are we going to do as a school to help support our data, to help make improvements, so we did that both with the ELA, reading teachers and special ed teachers, but we also did it with the math, and Lisa Murray, our math specialist, is going to talk with that, because they facilitated those data teams. And that's something we're going to continue to do as, throughout the year, is to kind of go back to the data and make sure that what we're doing in a classroom is addressing some of the data from MCAS. We're going to continue with our literacy team, I think what we've noticed with the standards, that literacy has to be integrated in everything that we do, and we're going to continue to do that. Our, our literacy team is, I think, about 13 years old, and it's still as strong as ever, and they provide professional development and support for our teachers. Our PLCs, again, looking at, at data, our vertical teaming, we've been very, that's been a very successful and popular in-service, and last year, what we did is we were able to align our teachers not only with our own middle school teachers, but actually, we aligned them, we were able to get some time for our high school freshman academy teachers to come down and meet with our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers, to make sure that what we're doing in middle school is setting them up for success when they get to high school, and we, both the middle and high school, found that very useful, and we're going to continue to do it this year as part of our end-of-the-year in-service. But our last vertical teaming, faculty teaming, was actually dedicated to looking at the data with the social studies department, to make sure that they know exactly what, particularly around the ELA, because some of the things that we're seeing with our data can actually be addressed in, in social studies as well, and I know Jackie's going to talk about that. We're going to have some element, PD with the elementary math coaches again, to actually bring us up to speed of what's happening down at the elementary school. We continue to have the open classroom, essentially what that is, it allows, we have teachers that have allowed other teachers to come in and observe, best practices, so if you walked around PCIS, you'll see a falcon on some of the doors, that just signifies that they are an open classroom, that teachers, if they want to look at, you know, what's going on in someone else's class, or again, best practices, they are open to those classrooms. Lisa Murray is working with our sixth and seventh grade students to help remediate some gaps, and what's nice about this year's boot camp is we're actually going to be looking at the data, when we choose students to participate in our MCAS boot camp, it's going to be data-driven, so we're going to look at students and where their skills are, and then address specific data-driven instruction for those students. So we haven't had that in the last few years with Park, but I think one of the things you're going to hear is the data that came from MCAS was very valuable, and we're able to now look at changing some things with the curriculum and with our classrooms. And again, just looking at some of the things that our data shows, is just consistency with terminology, making sure that the way that the state is asking questions and the terminology they're using, that we're using the same in the classroom. And then embedding more online assessments in our classes, because that's where, that's how our students are taking, our MCAS is really looking at, using technology to help assess students in the classroom. So I am going to turn it over, actually, I'm going to talk a little bit, so looking at, we want to make, make this measurable, so when we, we come back next year, we can, you know, actually have measurable information to see how we did, so our overall goal is always to meet or exceed the state average as far as the MCAS, and then, you know, the below state average, we want to improve our overall school-to-state difference by five to six percent in all grade levels. So essentially, if we're minus six below the state average, we want to be right at the state average, that would be meeting, meeting that goal, and as we go through, we like to obviously exceed all state averages, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gervais.
Thank you. As Mr. Palladino said, we were able to meet with grade-level ELA teachers and reading teachers and sped teachers, and I think the time, everyone appreciated the time to go over the data, so this is by grade, some of the needs that we found we could work on, synthesizing across, ideas across text, that's mostly for informational text, finding similar themes, and being able to use the evidence to support their ideas, just looking for a central idea of a nonfiction text was important in narrative, maybe they're, they understand theme a little bit better, but when you start thinking of nonfiction texts, central idea, purpose of a selection, how that section helps them understand the larger text, and that leads into like parts of a whole, why is this specific part so valuable to the rest of the text? Some of the things that we were hoping to do across all disciplines to help with this, Sarah Grant is the literacy coach at the other, at PSMS, we've been developing some general templates that can be used across all of the disciplines, and that way, students are more, in all their classes, are writing to text, are reading and responding, finding conclusions, and then finding the evidence from the text and getting used to just responding to, to their writing. Our, our January ELA in-service is dedicated to conventions, that was one of the big topics that came up, was develop, was the idea of conventions, I think in all the grades, actually, that was one of the big things, so we're working on that, we've been talking about some sort of, hopefully building some sort of anchor charts that we can say, these are, these are what we expect at middle school level, these are some of the things that we're hoping that all students can work towards. In terms of seventh grade, again, their open response, the synthesizing ideas, point-of-view, perspective, looking at different pieces and being able to determine whose point-of-view is being developed, and poetry, structure of different genres was important for us to consider, and some of the things that we've done, we've developed a list of sources that teachers can use, informational texts, they're multimodal, they can be online, they could be audio, they could be print text, for, that's, teachers can access and find pieces where students can practice these skills. More paired texts, we're trying to create questions that are MCAS-like, for students to be able to practice what's being expected. Part of the PD that we had was really looking at the, the rubric that the DESE has for the narrative and seeing, does that meet with what the language that we're using, and we've ordered different resources that do help develop point-of-view for students, and again, the content templates across all classes. I think for eighth grade, the biggest thing was the essay, that's, in our conversation, that's sort of the big, big idea that the teachers were focused on, and really developing this idea of an essay, what does it look like, what are the components, how do we get the students to reply using that essay format, and really thinking about the central idea of each passage. Again, we spent a lot of time looking at the rubric, the eighth grade, was it all the students, we were able to see all of their responses, so looking at the student work and then kind of comparing it to the rubric that was available to see where we could develop, help the students. Already, some of the teachers have created some big anchor charts that have the parts of the essay, these are what we're looking for in a lead, this is what we expect when we ask for evidence, and, please go into other things, but, so, yeah.
We'll turn it over to our math specialist, Lisa Murray, for our math data, and it's the goal, around the goal of the state average, that's the same as the ELA, so we're going to go right into the data.
Some of the areas of need in sixth grade were the geometry-based concepts, and like other communities in the state of Massachusetts, we came across a question on circles, which is not in the sixth-grade standards for the state of Massachusetts, so it was a little bit of a hiccup that we hit, so we got hit a little bit harder on that one than other pieces, and we're hoping that that will be addressed at a, at a higher level than, than I can do. We are fortunate that we are adopting the new big ideas program in sixth grade, so this program is helping us to better align with the 2017 Massachusetts frameworks, so using that new text and using number systems, expressions and equations, ratios and proportions, and tying them all and proportions, and tying them all into geometry problems, so it's not just a geometry problem, it's tying all of the mathematical standards into one bigger umbrella. We're hoping that we will hit those, and it will help the students to build those foundational pieces in sixth grade that some of them are not that fluid with yet. StarMath is a wonderful piece of data that we've been using a few years in the district. We have four testing windows for each grade, and the teachers give the students the assessment. It's 34 multiple-choice questions, and they get immediate feedback. What the student needs to work on as an individual in math, and what standards in Massachusetts frameworks should they be focusing on to help get them up to or beyond grade level. So, that's our goal with StarMath. And just the idea of revisiting the concepts and going back. We're fortunate that our sixth-grade math teachers are also their science teachers, so we're looking at how math and science can work together and almost double-dip in some of those standards, and especially with the graphing and the data tables and using variables and independent and dependent things with the graphing. So, that's a big piece that we're going to try to tie in. The other benefit that we have in sixth grade is the students have a math block. So, we're going to hope to utilize that math block a little bit more with constructive responses, which back in the day were open responses. So, again, knowing what the state is asking us is a big deal. If originally, we were looking at open responses, now they're constructive responses, there's a little bit of a difference to them. So, it's also knowing what the state expectation is at that level. With seventh grade, some of our areas of need were ratio and proportional relationships, number systems, again, expressions and equations. Again, it's those foundational pieces of math, and the way the standards are set up, sixth-grade number systems are significantly different than seventh-grade number systems that are being assessed on the MCAS. So, it's the sixth-grade foundational pieces plus a little bit more. So, that's why we're looking at some of those little lulls in those pieces of data, because we're still working on some of those foundational pieces. One thing that we're going to focus on is creating more of an exit ticket or a warm-up process for the students in February, March, and April, focusing on those skills that were taught back in September, that aren't necessarily carried through in the math curriculum. We do integers in the beginning of the year, and now they're doing proportions, and there's no negative numbers when we do proportions. So, it kind of, they kind of forget a little bit. So, we're going to revisit and make sure that those are fresh in their minds as they go through the seventh grade. Again, one of the types of questions that came up when we originally went to Park and now they're putting them in MCAS is the selective response questions, where it's select all that apply. So, it's no longer the multiple-choice A, B, C, D that we were used to coming up. It's you need to pick all of the appropriate answers. And unfortunately, if you don't pick all of the appropriate answers, you don't get any points, you get a zero. So, it's kind of an all or nothing at the state level when it comes to the selective response questions. So, it's getting those students to realize that there is more than one right answer, and you need to actually look at all of the choices and really delve into them. You can't really, the elimination process isn't what it used to be when we were doing our multiple-choice testing. Again, the vertical teaming is fabulous. We had a chance for our seventh-grade math teachers to sit down and talk to the seventh-grade science teachers, and I think it's just being able to create that connection for the student. Because like I said, in sixth grade, it's the same teacher. When you go from one teacher to a different teacher, the subject matter doesn't carry. So, we're trying to make those connections for the kids, saying, okay, you did this in math, and you can still do it in science, too. It's not like you went to another planet, you're still here. So, and again, we're hoping to make that continuum a little bit better with the curriculum, because we use Big Ideas in seventh grade. So, we're hoping that transition really helps out with the seventh grade. And lastly, eighth grade. Eighth-grade areas of needs, again, geometry, statistics, and probability. There's a bivariate rate question that always seems to get them. When you have two pieces of data, they're being displayed in a graph, it gets a little hinky for some of them. The benefits we have in eighth grade is we do have that problem-solving program along with the Algebra I program. So, a lot of the students are doing double exposure. And the double exposure showed a great benefit with the Pythagorean theorem in eighth grade, where we were 11 percent higher than the state. So, they really rocked it in eighth grade on the Pythagorean theorem. Again, the StarMath is helping us lead the instruction, and we're working on creating an MCAS pre-assessment that we're hoping to give the students in March, to help us focus more closely on those specific standards that we need to hit a little bit harder in April, prior to the testing.
All right, so, I'm going to ask our teachers to leave, and I'm going to ask our students to step forward. Goal number four, I'm very proud of. This is something that has been in the back of my head for a while, and really, you know, getting back with students and working with them on a regular basis, and I'm very proud of these students. We've been working for the last few months on a project. I'm going to start by talking a little bit about the group, and then I'm going to turn it over to the students and let them actually present goal number four, so. While we're waiting for that to load, I will introduce everyone. We have Abby Andre, an eighth grader in Ranger House, Ava Bajorian, am I close?
No.
She's Ava, I don't call this, what is it?
Boyagen.
Boyagen. And then we have Faith Studholm, Max Westberg, DJ Chase, and Allison Norwood. And then we have Kyle McCormick, who is a senior at Plymouth North High School, and Kyle is here as part of his senior project. Kyle emailed me early in the year, looking to do a senior project around leadership, and I thought this was a great match for him and me. So, Kyle's role here is to really build that connection between middle school and high school and leadership. Kyle spent some time talking to our students here about leadership opportunities up at the high school, because these students, as you'll hear, were chosen because they are future leaders. They are leaders here at PCIS, but we also see them as leaders when they go to high school. And Kyle's spending time with these students to help them understand what's up at the high school for leadership opportunities, and hopefully, making that segue into high school and being part of student council and student government, and all service learning and things that Kyle's been able to do up at the high school. So, he's been valuable here. So, as a group here, when we met, we actually did some research on some service learning projects, what's out there? If we were going to do a project and give back, where do we want to focus our energy, and what do we want to do, and what do we think is valuable? So, our first couple of meetings was looking at service learning, and what we found, what we determined to be a need is the homeless population. I think if you drive around Plymouth, you probably noticed there is a homeless population in Plymouth. So, that became our focus, and these guys with Kyle developed an action plan, and we're going to let them talk about what that was and what we're doing and our goal. We've gotten a lot of work done in a short period of time. So, and the program is called Hearts for Homeless, and when we did our action plan, we actually looked at, we wanted to have this service learning project end right before February vacation. So, one of the, one of you guys said, talked about Valentine's Day, so Hearts for the Homeless became our initiative. So, we will start with Faith.
So, as Mr. Palladino said, we're a group of PCIS students that were chosen by our teachers, our principal, vice principal, and like administrative officers, as shown as leaders, not just in the classroom but outside of the classroom. So, all of our jobs is we got called down to Mr. Palladino's office, and he told us what we were here for. And we were here, the reason we're here is we want to make a difference in the school, not just in the school but outside of the school. So, as he said, Hearts for the Homeless is pretty much a sock drive, because, you know, the homeless doesn't have socks, so the other student members will talk about that.
All right, so we have, do you want to grab the mic?
Okay, so, when you think about donations for the winter homeless population, you don't usually think about like hats and gloves and jackets. And one thing that people don't really think about is donations of socks, and socks are really important for the homeless people. And it's also like one of the most overlooked donations, which is why it's the most important.
Socks are very important, because if you don't wear socks or wear clean socks, then it can cause diseases and frostbite, and they'll be very painful.
And mobility is very important, especially for the homeless, because if you're without a home, especially during the winter months, then you need to get places. You need to go get food, you need shelter during the night, so you don't get frostbite or any diseases, as Max said. And if you're immobile, then you're stuck out there, very vulnerable to the elements, frostbite, the cold.
Some of, throughout like the student council, we have, came up with an action plan. So, we started with homeless, and then we thought of like the winter months and like how it's cold out. And we've reached out to like local businesses, like Target, Walmart, and Dick's for like donations of socks. We also have contacted the Plymouth Police Department for their support of like putting them in like cars. We also talked to the PCIS staff during a faculty meeting, and we're also working with the Plymouth Area Coalition, and they're also like part of the Plymouth Police Department, and they help with that. Also, some local churches in Plymouth will be holding a sock drive. Also, an interview is set up with an Old Colony Memorial and Emily Goonan for publicity. And we are also organizing a sock drive at the school throughout like the houses.
We need all the help we can get. So, we are asking people to drop off socks to distribute to shelters, and as Abby said, we are asking police officers to put socks in the cars and at the stations to hand out to the homeless. We are also talking to local businesses for donations and the school committee for donations. We are putting boxes in each house and asking students to come in and donate socks. And we are putting, making posters and posting it on social media for others to help us with donations.
So, essentially, when we talk about conferencing with the police department, these guys are the ones conferencing with the police department. They develop letters to go out to Dick's, Walmart for donations. They have kind of done it all. I just kind of helped facilitate, Kyle and I just helped facilitate. These ideas come from them, I'm very proud of them. I think this is going to be a very successful sock drive. And again, the idea is to put socks in the hands or on the feet of homeless, particularly during the winter months. So, like I said, these guys have put a lot of work into this, and will continue to work. We still got a lot more work to do. Kyle, did I miss anything? You're here to bat and clean up, so did I. All right. All right, so at this point, do you have any questions?
Committee members with questions? Ms. Burgess?
Yes, it mentions that a church would be involved, and I was wondering how the churches are being involved in it.
So, these guys reached out to their churches and asked for their support. So, actually, Jack George, that was his task, was to reach out to the churches for, not only we were asking them to do sock drives, but we're also, if they have any dealings with the homeless, we're asking if we could drop off socks once we collect them to the local churches. So, Jack is not here, but I know Jack's church is one of the churches that he's got.
Well, I'm a member of the Plymouth Area Interfaith Clergy, and we haven't heard about it, and I think it would be a good thing for us to do. And Connie Malhorse, that does the homeless men, she's a member of this group, too. So, it would all work together if we could, if you don't mind, I could ask the Plymouth Area Interfaith Clergy at our next meeting.
No, that's perfect. Actually, our conversation with the Plymouth Police Department put us in connection with the Plymouth Area Coalition of the Homeless. So, the more we reach out to people, the more we actually learn what's out there, because that was part of our task, is to figure out what's out there for support.
And these socks are just for children or for adults as well?
Nope, nope. We're going to get, we're looking at various sizes, so, you know, essentially, we just want brand-new socks, clean socks, all sizes.
You just need clean, new socks of all sizes. Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Hunt?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Other questions or comments from committee members? Certainly, socks is a great idea, because it's inexpensive for somebody to buy a pair of socks and drop them off. So, you have drop boxes, obviously, in your school, where else are you having them?
So, we're, our sock drive, part of our action plan was our sock drive starts on January 29th and goes until February 16th. So, these guys on Thursday are making the, but we have boxes, they're going to design them. Actually, Abby is working on a logo on Thursday, so we're hoping to brand this as well for social media. Emily, as was mentioned, Emily Goonan, actually met with us to look at social media branding. So, once that logo is designed, that's going to go out. So, it's all, all the drop boxes are here at PCIS, but like I had mentioned, we're hoping to have some boxes at the local churches as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, we have a facilities update coming up. Dr. Campbell?
Yes, Mr. Montron, the director of facilities, is here to give us a program update.
Good evening. This is our annual. Come talk to the committee and tell them who you are.
You might grab that microphone. Thank you.
Too many of them. Thank you for allowing us to come down this evening. I don't even know if this works or how it works.
See if we can put the PDF up in the attachment. Give it one second, Mr. Montron.
Thank you again. Our department is Facility Services. These are the custodial maintenance workers from across the district. They do a number of things every day. It changes quite often. It's not a set routine every day. There's always something that comes up, and we need to react and take care of the problem. The department is made up of 87 full-time equivalents, 13 maintenance and custodial floaters, 51 custodians, 12 head custodians, six skilled craftsmen, a facility scheduling coordinator, two secretaries, myself and my assistant. Our numbers haven't changed much over the years. We've maintained the staffing level for quite some time, thanks to the committee and the budget process. What we do, we maintain. We clean and maintain 16 buildings, the fields and grounds maintenance for all of the buildings. We prepare the capital outlay and the budget. We do vehicle maintenance for our own maintenance vehicles. We do trash removal and deliveries to all the buildings, track absenteeism, do work order scheduling, the school dude scheduling program, and also facility scheduling and energy usage. Our 16 buildings are all of the elementary, middle, and high schools, and in this past year, with the closing of Mount Pleasant, our 16 facilities are about 1.7 million square feet. We do have one of the largest school districts around. We have 372 acres of fields, ball fields, and it's going to go up, hopefully, this spring, as we bring South High onboard. But we maintain the fields and all the grass and around the buildings. We also do all of the snow removal and icing operations for the school district. As Dr. Campbell mentioned earlier, we have four trucks with sanders that we use to try and keep everything sanded in the wintertime, and it's quite a challenge. It's a juggling act to make sure that you get to each one of the schools before the buses and the students. Our budget and capital outlay, this year's budget is $20,000,000. Our, uh, budget and capital outlay, uh, this year's budget is $2,148,689. And we also prepare and administer the capital outlay for the district. And this year, we submitted a total of $6,617,147 worth of projects. And we will find out soon what's been approved. Our vehicle maintenance, as I said, we maintain a fleet of eighteen maintenance vehicles, mainly trucks and trash compacters. And then we have oversight of twenty-seven other vehicles that are used throughout the district for various needs from attendance supervisors to technology vans to project growth. Our waste removal and material deliveries are done mainly by our truck driver. Uh, he's responsible to go around to each one of the elementary schools every day, empty the dumpsters, on, into the compactor and bring them up to C Mass and, and get rid of it. He does a round in all of the elementary schools twice a day. It's a lot of driving. He does a great job. Uh, our maintenance floaters are used to deliver the slot supplies and materials to and from the different buildings in the district. Two secretaries take care of tracking all of the absenteeism with the supervisor and getting people to fill vacancies as we need to. Uh, and we also process all of our own bills for the district, regardless of whether or not someone's creating a bill by working in a school or directly for our office. Uh, work order scheduling is done using School Dude, which as the committee will remember, was purchased a few years back. Uh, it's been a great program. This year to date, we've had seventeen hundred and seventy-two closed work orders, thirty that are completed right now, twenty-two in process, and a hundred and thirty-six that are new.
Excuse me.
Facility scheduling is done with our, with our, uh, Facilities Use Coordinator, Jill Daven. Uh, this number's been growing, but right now we have a hundred and ninety-seven community use partners. These are groups and people that go on to School Dude themselves and schedule the buildings as they want to use them. And then Jill goes through and makes sure that they have all their insurance and paperwork is in order and. This year's facility use, we've had nine hundred and fifty approved, five new submittals this week. Thirty-one have been canceled and sixteen declined. And those could be anything from something that changed and the group doesn't want to use the building that particular day. Or it could be that after-school programs were closed because of a storm. We work with, uh, Mr. Costin to track our utilities and energy use and to find ways to save energy. We've done quite a number of, of energy savings projects over the last few years. And this results in cost avoidance for the budget so that it can be used for direct services to students. I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of the men and women of my department. I think they do a spectacular job for the school district and the town of Plymouth. I think our buildings are the best that, that they could possibly be. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, I'll put these buildings up against any school district in the state. I think we do have a, a great system and I think they do a great job. Thank you. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to try and answer.
Committee members with questions or comments?
I just have, after sitting through capital outlay and when I was reading your slides, the slide eight and nine where you talk about the vehicle maintenance and the, the kind of like waste removal and all that we need for the trucks, a big, we had actually a fairly long conversation about why the school has so many vehicles after you left. And I think this just might be something that we should consider including in your, um, my god, your packet of information that you provide next year.
We have a lot of vehicles. They're not, I think some of the committees think they're all maintenance vehicles and they're not.
And that was what I was explaining and, cause they were very surprised when you gave them the number of how many are for students and how many aren't for student use. And, you know, it was, we have a big district and things are moving all over the place at all times. So it just might be helpful for them to understand.
Mr. Morgan?
Um, you mentioned that North continues to be the top producer of building use. Do you see the demand for South increasing with the new school opening or?
I have no doubt that the administration itself is gonna do everything they can do to become a bigger producer than North. It's something about that rivalry.
Other, other questions or comments? Do you know that you're the Tom Brady of Plymouth Public Schools?
Absolutely.
When we, when we get behind with ice and snow or, or program failure or maintenance, you know, you come through.
It's not, it's not me. It's, it's the entire department.
Well, that's what Tom Brady always says. Thank you very much. That was a great presentation.
I was getting a big bonus for being in that Super Bowl.
Uh, we're gonna take a little break here. Uh, so let's get back in session by about twenty-five after please. Thank you, everybody, for getting back in time. Next item is to revisit the school calendar, which we actually took action on our previous meeting. Dr. Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Sorensen. As you recall, we did, um, you all voted on the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen calendar, just last meeting. Uh, the very next day, we were notified by the town that the state, uh, changed the proposed date to the state primary. There is actually, um, a provision in the general laws that says if a religious holiday falls immediately before the second Tuesday on or before the second Tuesday in September, that the state primary shall, uh, be re- re- looked at. So that process was in play and the decision wasn't made until the very next day when we were notified that the state primary will actually take place on September fourth. As you may recall, that was the day that we were gonna start school for our kids. Having school on an election day, whether it's a state primary or not, um, has not been in the best interest in the past. And we've had a lot of recommendations, excuse me, from the police department to avoid those days if at all possible. So what you have before you, and I printed, I'm sorry, yes.
We just have policy.
You're correct.
Years ago.
Right. So we immediately knew that we needed to bring something else before you this evening. Um, there were some issues on electronic school board. There was also a typo that was corrected. But I printed a hard copy for you all for this evening for consideration. Um, so as you recall, before, we were going to start our teachers, um, on the twenty-ninth, and have the students come back on September fourth. What we're proposing now is for the students to come back for two days, um, in, in August, August thirtieth and thirty-first, to get those two day, days in. We've done that. We, we have started before. We've started before Labor Day for many years, primarily because we know those first few days are really a transition, trying to transition kids back to school. And it also gives us some time at the end of the year with, with snow and weather considerations. It becomes a challenge when we get deep into, to June. Um, so the changes that we've made to this proposal are for the students to start on Thursday, August thirtieth. And they will also be there Friday, August thirty-first. And then the students would actually have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday off. So there'd be four days that the families would have to have a Labor Day weekend. It would just be shifted a little differently. And then, um, that day would be used for Professional Development Day with staff on September fourth. We'd have the, we'd have the staff in because as you know, with the new, with the contract, we have two Professional Development Days. We really wanna do that at the beginning of the year because it really helps to, to kick off the year, to have it as close to the start of the school year as possible. So with those changes and with gaining two days in August, the last proposed day actually changes from being a Monday to a Friday, June fourteenth. So pending any weather issues, so if there's any reason to go into the following week, it's not because we put it on the calendar. It's because, you know, something happened weather-wise. Um, but those are the changes. So, um, with those changes, the, we always build in five extra days for snow, um, hoping that we don't need to use those. Those would bring us to June twenty-first if we needed to utilize all those. If we started after, um, September fourth, that would bring us to June twenty-fifth. So at the, at the, at the earliest in terms of the hundred and eighty-fifth day. So we, our proposal was to start before Labor Day, to get a couple of days in, um, and then have a modified week the following week and then be back in full force, like, like we've done in prior years.
Ms. Badger?
So I've had quite a lot of discussion about this proposal ever since it went across on, uh, social media. I mean, it delayed my Zoom book class the other day by a good five minutes. Um, anytime I go into the gym, it's a subject. So I'm just gonna bring up to conversation that I'm wondering if there's a possibility, if the committee feels if we move it back the start date to the fifth of September, um, we still do that teacher work day on the Thursday or whatever. There's no school on the Friday. The revolt also was about having class on Fri- uh, school on Friday, um, before Labor Day, even though they were getting the Monday off, which would, if we, we could do two things, we could make that recess that Wednesday before Thanksgiving a half-day again. Or we could just add the two days on at the end, which would get us out on a Tuesday or Wednes- Tuesday, right, the eighteenth of June? So, so we would start school on September fifth with all the kids. The kids would come to school on the fifth, which would be, what, a Wednesday? Um, so they go to school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, right, normal? And then they'd start their school, their year normally. Then we have, um, right now, we have a ha- a full day off the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I'm just saying we could return that to a half-day, which we've done for years and years. Last year was the first year it was a full day off. Um, and that was actually a teacher who said she would rather work a half-day on the day before Thanksgiving. And then we have, and then that would either make our last day that Monday or that Tuesday.
Just regarding the, the Wednesday, the half-day before Thanksgiving, we did, we did tra- we did track the attendance because I know that was a concern when we went forward and we actually saw no change to the attendance of our students in the days that they were in session, which was really good. We're happy to see that. That day, the feedback that we've received on that day is that the people really appreciated having that day because so many families travel for Thanksgiving. So it's the only reason that we left that in there.
Yeah, I figured as much.
And I think that, I think that the people of, who, who are requesting that we have no school on Friday before Labor Day are requesting no school because they're trying to plan the end of the summer, long weekend. And then we have the people who are trying to plan a, a long Thanksgiving. So we're gonna, we can't please all the people all the time.
No, and I think a part of it had to do with just childcare on both ends. This way, they were going all the way through one week and all the way through another. That was just.
Labor Day, they've still got it because they've got the Tuesday because it's the election. Yeah.
Mrs. Trussell.
I just heard such a good response, starting school after, uh, Labor Day. There was just a good buzz out there. A lot of people, it was on social media, were thrilled to see school actually start after Labor Day. So I don't know, you might get some calls. I haven't heard anything per se yet, but I know there was some good buzz prior to when we first discussed this. So you may hear some other things because a lot of people are very excited to start after Labor Day. So I know Dr. Sorensen makes valid point. Can't please everybody, for sure, because we're gonna have to give up something on the other side to start prior to, but I don't know if we can make some concessions or what the general idea is.
Sure. And, and I think, um, right, and that's good feedback. And we've tried to, we try to accommodate as many interests as we hear. And we're also trying to, some people don't like to go late into June too. So just, whatever we do, um, we just have to keep in mind that.
Yeah, cause we went, I think we, I think we.
Well, if we went the fifth, yeah, so.
Like it felt like all of a sudden it was the Fourth of July and then summer was.
Ms. Hunt?
Well, we're still getting buzz too for not having two full weeks at Christmas, which we had two years ago. So I know that's kind of what I heard is, is that.
Oh, when the holiday falls.
And I know we're not gonna make, yeah, exactly. It's, it depends on what day of the week.
Yep.
Yeah, my experience has been over the years, there's a whole bunch of people who like us to go to school before Labor Day so that we, so we get out way before Fourth of July. And there's a whole bunch of people who prefer to go in after Labor Day. I mean, there's, there's an argument on both sides of that. Now, now that the, uh, the state bought a, a vote, uh, what commission is that that makes that decision on the, the primary? Who makes the decision on the primary? Comes from the government?
Yeah.
Secretary of State.
Secretary Galvin.
It must be Galvin.
It's Galvin's office?
Yeah, Secretary of State, yeah.
So now that that decision was made, that changes things for us. Can't lose sight of that fact. That it's, uh, it's, you know, back in the day, we used to have the voters in the building with the kids. We don't think that's safe anymore.
No, it's not.
We stopped that years ago.
Yeah, because, because it's a safety issue. Anybody can walk on it. Yeah, it's terrible.
And traffic. Traffic's a big problem too.
So this is a recommendation from Central Office. This is an action item as well, if I read it correctly. Yes, it is.
I'd like to.
Ms. Burgess?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we, uh, do it as presented.
Burgess moves the recommendation of administration regarding the revised school calendar for next year. Is there a second? Mrs. Hunt is the second. Any further discussion on this matter? Okay, then we shall take the vote.
I'm not even in there.
Waiting on one vote, Ms. Burgess?
Yeah, I know. Margie's not in. Thing won't even come up.
Did you join the man?
No, it's still not. All right, let me try this again. No, it's around here.
All right, just add into the suspense.
No, it won't come out. It's, I'm here, okay.
Have you joined in?
Uh, yeah, I joined the meeting three times already, but I'll join it again. And then I'll hit the twenty-second again and see if nothing happens.
She's logged in too.
And I'm logged in. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
All right, well, uh. We'll make a note of the vote.
I have no idea why it won't.
How are you gonna vote? You gonna vote for your own motion? Well, that means it's unanimous because everybody else voted for the motion, so.
No, it's not.
Oh, no?
It's not, no.
I don't think, I don't think we can see it. I think you might have to do it the old-fashioned way.
We don't see that.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It'll come up.
Okay, well, you know, we're gonna take it, we're gonna take the show of hands. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? We have one opposition. Everybody else voting in favor.
We'll, we'll, we'll take note of that. Ms. Burton, get that, yeah.
Hey, I did what I was told.
Okay, can we move on to job descriptions? Are you?
Yes, we have.
Ms. Frye?
Um, yes, we're finishing up with our para educator job descriptions. The first one is a classroom para educator, category one. And primarily, this exists solely in our kindergartens, which is one piece that we added with the Full Day K model. Um, and we did really recreate it from when it was in existence from nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, any discussion on this, uh, job description or questions? Ms. Frye, I have two.
Yes.
That I'd like you to address. Underperformance responsibilities, number four. No, strike that, not number four. Number three, it says, it sits in reviewing student work, which is objective in nature. I, I, I'm not clear what you're, what that says.
What that is, is, um, the, the para educator never assesses student work in any way, shape, or form, but they do sometimes collect the work and, um, make a, make sure that it's handed in on time and things of that nature, but they're not grading.
Student work, which is objective in nature.
Yes, so any type of objective, a, a creative assignment, they may be doing an artwork assignment because they do go into the specials with the children as well. So it was something that in our committee, we talked about, that it's something, it could be any type of assignment. So it isn't really a specific piece, so.
Is it just me?
They don't need the end.
What's objective here? What, we want the assessing to be objective?
Correct. We want it to be more, we, we don't want them being the specific person. We want it to be more, we don't want them being the specific person assessing the piece.
Doesn't it read like--
Yeah, it's a little hard word.
Assisting reviewing student work, which is objective in nature, shouldn't it read, assists in objectively reviewing student work?
It may. We, I can make that change. We, I've read a lot of these, so I--
That would make it clearer to me.
Absolutely. So assists in objectively--
Reviewing student work.
Yeah, reviewing student work. Yes. Absolutely.
May I make another suggestion on this one?
Sure.
If we go down to number 12?
Yeah.
I think the 504 student accommodation plan is too important to let it fall under, et cetera.
Okay, so add 504.
I think the 504 student accommodation plan ought to be listed.
Yep.
Anything else on this job description? This is a Ms. Badger?
I just, and this has probably been on all the job description, but for some reason, when I looked at it this time, it just kind of, on all these, number 15, or the last point on all of them, where it says, "Perform such other duties and tasks and assesses such other responsibilities," do we really need the word "such"? Can we just do perform?
That is the one line we've kept from all the 1992 jobs.
Literally, I was like--
That's the one that we touched.
I know I've read it before, but I was like--
Yeah, it's been on all of them, so--
Why do we have "such"?
Yep, that was the original, we did take that one, we never made a change to that language from the big book in my office, it's in every job description, including my own.
Some sort of legal, like, "such" and "such."
We don't have to do it.
So you're removing the second "such"?
Well, both, I mean, you don't even need "such," I mean, why? Perform other duties or tasks.
As long as you're okay with the ones we've already approved, it's still in there, rather than going back, and we'll do that from here. Yep, and I can do it in the ones forward. Take out both "such," perform other duties.
Okay, so we had three corrections on this one. With those corrections, is there a motion? Ms. Badger?
I move we approve classroom para-educator category one job description as presented with edits.
As corrected.
As corrected, thank you.
Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second. Any other questions to the motion? Margie, are we voting orally here?
No, I think I'm completely out and back in.
She's back in, great. All right, so we'll take the vote on this one.
Well, I can vote. I just canceled me and went right back and signed in.
Oh, yeah, now we can see it.
Maybe it's because everybody's there.
Everybody voted in favor, thank you.
Yes.
Now we're going to go to the next one, computer lab.
Yes, computer lab para-educator, and in some of our buildings, we do have a para-educator who works in our labs, and this, we really had to make changes to keep it up with all the new technology in our schools. And they, this individual in the buildings, a lot of times, when we have district-wide surveys, the community that care surveys, they help facilitate that with a classroom teacher who goes in. So, I mean, I'll make the changes that you mentioned with "such" on this as well.
Thank you.
Been here, too. It's everyone.
Are there any such changes to be brought in? Second motion, please. Ms. Hunt?
I'll move to accept the proposed job description with changes.
Seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Question? Okay, please vote. Okay, next one, please.
Yes, the next is the IMC. We did keep the label IMC to keep it consistent with the contract language. The high schools are now calling their libraries Learning Commons and libraries, but we did keep that solely to remain consistent with the contract, obviously. And this is something, we have someone who works in the library, they do a great job, and we made a number of different edits to put this, and it's really redone completely from where it was before, it had the Dewey Decimal System and things like that, and so it really has changed a lot. And I'll remove the "suchs" as well.
Mr. Morgan, you're voting? I mean, you're--
Yeah, I'm making a motion to move the description as presented.
Seconded by--
With corrections.
With corrections.
Ms. Trussell is the second. Okay, with the corrections, and now we'll take the vote.
Just a weird to me, I don't know why it stuck out this time.
All right, everybody vote in favor. Security receptionist?
Yes, this, we had to modify a lot, again, this was 1992, there were the, 92 was left off on the second page, but this is really the person who greets you in the schools, it's an important job, but they're really focused on the Raptor system and the sign-in, so that's been a big new language change in the past, and the school security changes we've made. So this is the security receptionists that are all part-time.
Committee?
Such.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve para-educator category two, security receptionist with the changes.
Seconded by Mr. Trussell. Questions? Okay, and now the SAM para-educator.
Yes, and this is a student activity monitor who works with our children at recess and the cafeteria and places like that, and we made a number of changes on this as well. We'll remove the "such," and--
Sorry.
What's the word of the day?
Ms. Hunt moves it.
Yep.
Seconded by. Ms. Badger, questions? Okay.
Just a quick thank you to the, a lot of people, I, we meet every Tuesday at 10:00 to go over this, so a lot of people helped in the process, so the unions at every meeting and people from my office, so it's monotonous but important to get done, they need updates, so.
It's a big project.
It is. I want to thank them.
Can I ask you to vote? Oh, there it is. Okay, great, thank you. Reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Hunt?
Okay, I wanted to, well, I was going to mention that I attended the Early Childhood Fair, I got there pretty late, so I missed you, or I missed a few people, but I--
I think we probably, yeah, we probably--
Yeah, I had a nice opportunity to talk to Mrs. Cable from, about what they're doing. They've got a lot going on right now. I know I told her that they had our support, and there were a lot of people there. I got there right as the Toe Jam Puppet Band was playing.
I knew.
So I saw, you know, Mrs. Riordan was there with her son, and it was good, I was surprised at how many people went there. I did miss the opportunity to get a ride on the school bus. So I was, I was a little upset about that, but no, it was great, and it was just amazing. I did get to talk to Mrs. Cable a lot, a little bit, with my PTA background and engaging parents, about that this is, this is, that's the turning point, that's the key right there, is that age parents, and I know, I don't know, we haven't really talked about if we're going to do another Parents Summit or not, but I think that there's definitely something to that audience, and if we can get them engaged then, then hopefully, we can keep them engaged for several years, because it's, it definitely is the time, I know it's when I got started, was when I needed to get out with my children and start meeting people and seeing what education was like for them, and I, it just was really impressive to see the numbers that were there, even as late as I got there.
Yeah, I've said it since, since I moved to Plymouth, really, 18 years ago, the Plymouth Family Network is a great resource for our young families that are just starting off with their children. Sue West from the hospital was one of the first people--
I had a long conversation with her.
--that we met when we were expecting our son, and--
Same here.
--got us connected to PFN, and I've always said that that model is, you know, as our students enter to our schools, it's really important, because it's about strong families and strong communities, and they've got a good model there. So if we can replicate that, and the qualities that they have, and those conditions--
Absolutely.
--it only helps us as we're establishing those relationships in our schools.
Absolutely, it was a great, it was a great experience. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is, I was asked by the Plymouth North Boosters to mention a couple of fundraisers that they're having, next, well, the 29th, which is next week, I believe, I don't know what day of the week it is.
Monday.
Monday?
Monday.
Texas Roadhouse will be doing a fundraiser for Plymouth North Boosters from 4:00 to 10:00 PM. They're going to be giving proceeds of the night to the Booster Club. And then on March 30th, the Booster Club is having their annual comedy night at Cabbie Shack with Christine Hurley, she's once again helping out the Booster Club, and if you've not seen that, especially if you're a public figure, you might want to go, because you might be mentioned. Tickets are $25, they're limited, and I was asked if you're interested in tickets, I have a phone number, you can actually, if you mind me mentioning it, it's Kristen Payton, 508-317-7846, and she would like anybody that's interested in some tickets to get them while they are still available.
What day is it?
That is March 30th. I've gone for the last several years, it's pretty funny.
Okay, what are we, what are the reports and proposals from committee members? Mr. Morgan?
I'll just mention that on Friday and Saturday, PCIS is putting on Beauty and the Beast at Plymouth North High School, and I've attended several of their productions, Shrek Jr. and several other ones, and they do an excellent job, and so I recommend attending one of the presentations.
Thank you. I should report that, oh, I'm sorry.
It's fine, you can go.
Go right ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I just wanted to thank everyone who came to the Plymouth No Place Free Coffee House, we raised almost $500 for our award that we're going to give out to a student at each school this coming June, so we're really excited about it, so thank you. That's it.
Just to report that Mr. Bagley, Ms. Burgess, and myself were able to do the Federal Furnace, Federal Furnace Tour a week ago Wednesday morning, and as they all are, it was enjoyable. Kids are so cute.
Yeah.
I was able to attend the induction ceremony at South the other night, and as Dr. Campbell reported, very elegant, very elegant presentation in the, it's not like a cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria. Other committee members.
I just, I just, also, I went the day before to the Federal Furnace School for that, that gym show.
Gym show.
That was very good, and it was the teacher's last show, because she's retiring, I think it's 33 years, so, yeah, so anyway, I took some pictures, and, yeah.
Any other reports and proposals from committee members? Going once, going twice, moving on. PYDC.
Oh, PYDC.
Everybody got the minutes in their package?
Yeah.
We did?
You all did?
Yes, we all got them.
Okay, so if you've read them all, I don't have to go over it all, yeah, but I'll do some of it for the public. And anyway, really, the big thing this time was to, that Kelly Makome came on board and was introduced and talked a little about what she wanted, she had an introductory call that she presented to us, and so I think that things are, now that, they've got two new people now, so things will get up and get, really get rolling.
It's great to have dedicated people within the community that are going to help us with these initiatives.
Yeah, so that's great. And so, let's see, yeah, they had the coffee house, the Amazing Race, they've had, from a fitness partnership, the, during New England, oh, New England Villages Mobile Farmers Market, and let's see, Subcommittee, Trina Camaro from Federal Furnace reported, they had identified an intern from Quincy College that'll begin on the end of January, 10 to 12 hours through the spring, and the goals of the person will be to increase communication, meeting prep notes, follow-up outreach, event planning, oh, they'll be really busy for 10 to 12 hours, their tongues will be hanging out. And so, and the prevention, because Gary led the meeting this time.
Yes.
And, but he also talked about prevention, that, that the eighth grade students have taken the prevention survey already, and there were 25 to 30 students who opted out, and students that have been identified as anxiety-sensitive make up the largest group of the youth, and so we'll know more in February. And State Rep Matt Morituri shared that his office has been contacted about Drug Story Theater and asked the group for feedback. Brian had said that, Palladino had said that it was impactful, and so they'll be, Kelly will be in contact with the individuals from Drug Story Theater about the best step, next steps, and Nate was, Nate's the--
Horowitz Willis.
The new health guy in Plymouth, and he, he shared that he is excited to continue to build relationships in the Plymouth community and express if anybody has any issues or concerns regarding public health, to reach out to him for support. And I guess they did on the closing of the school, of that.
Yes, they had a stomach bug going through there.
So anything, anything with health, so, but he's, he's a really nice, I think he's a good warmfuddy, I think he's a good addition to the town.
He's a great addition to the town, absolutely.
I do, yeah, yeah. So that's PYDC.
Okay, thank you. And now, you still have the floor, Ms. Burgess, because we're now doing Building Committee.
Yes.
We had a meeting last Thursday night--
Yep, we did.
--to discuss the projects.
And, okay, Newtown Hall, they gave us a lot of, then, 99.75% done, and--
That's really specific.
So they're winding up little, the biggest thing, I think, is the lights in the room where the selectmen meet, they keep going off. I think if everybody's just sitting there listening to the meeting, there doesn't seem to be any activity, so cameras think no one's in there. And they seem to not be able to get to the bottom of the problem yet, so hopefully, that'll be figured out pretty soon. So they're, and they're chasing some air filtration that they found that's coming in under some of the windows, so that's it, so they're going to, just, the future is just to do the punch list, they've given pictures, the staircase is now open, and doesn't seem to be a lot of room for employees to eat or anything, I think, but that's just me. The next one was South High School, the ball fields are going to be finished March through August, the driveway's going to be done during April vacation, putting the final coat on. Not too much more, they're just finishing up with little punch list things and stuff like that.
So before we move off that, before we move off the high school, one of the discussions we had at the meeting was whether or not the lights are going to slow down the project at this point, because there is some grading that has to be, the sole project, there has to be some grading that has to be done, some infrastructure that has to be done, and so it has to be coordinated. So the question we discussed at Building Committee was whether or not, the, as you reported here at our last meeting, that the RFP's gone out, but we're not getting any feedback, which we didn't have any feedback before tonight, I don't know if there is tonight. So can you comment on that?
Do we jump into that?
Okay, please.
We, the RFP went out some time ago, and we had a, selected a vendor. What we're currently doing is, one of the issues that have come up, two issues have come, as I reported a little bit last time, is that the state is in between funding programs, and they finalized their funding program, they've extended the, what's called the SREC II program through June 30th, and that happened since we last met. The SMART program will start after that, and they finalized that model, so now, we're working with Ameresco, who is the vendor that was selected as the most advantageous, to put together the best financing and pricing model. We're a little bit apart, to be honest with you, and we're working with them, negotiating with them to get that price per kilowatt hour down, to make this financially feasible project. So that's kind of where we are right now. We will not have lights in by March 31st or the beginning of April, that's something I've made Tom Finnegan aware of, and it's going to have to be installed after.
Okay, because at our meeting the other night, you hadn't talked to him.
Right, Musco is very aware of that, who would be the supplier of the lights, the manufacturers, the sole source, the sleeves are for Musco Lights, and they're, they're very aware that they would have to put it in on existing turf. So that's something, the fields will definitely be done, the lights will have to go on after.
But the groundwork for the lighting is there, isn't it?
Correct, that was, the part of the project, they put in, I should say, the Building Committee agreed to fund the supports, the concrete supports, the conduit. So simply, what has to be done is the stanchions have to be erected, the lights have to be put on, and the wires have to be pulled, I'm simplifying it, but really, that's, that's what has to be done.
The Russell Street parking deck plans for April through November construction. Maritime facility, they have this big thing, the current project stands under $3 million is what I, I see. They're just doing the permitting, the design. They're getting all ready for, anyway, the maritime project that's gonna be down at the waterfront, at the, it's at the old boat ramp in that area. And...
I'll just say that the maritime facility has to come before Spring Town Meeting.
Yeah.
Because it needs a variance on the height. It's a foot and a half over the height it should be.
That's right.
But the funding looks very optimistic at this point.
Okay. And North Plymouth Fire Station. They've interviewed three firms for the project, and the finalist is Maguire. They're having, they're having project meetings that have begun already. Actually, I guess they're, they're finished with the progress meeting on the 11th, so they had four meetings quickly in a row. Anyway, the existing conditions of being completed by the town surveyor and the field work was started one on January 10th. The boreings are scheduled for Monday and Tuesday, so it was already done. Wetlands, the CONCOM has confirmed existing delineations that remain valid. Preliminary plan will be submitted when appropriate. And free demolition investigations. They're doing a hazmat survey, and it'll be done by civil and environmental consultants. And, let's see. So, they'll be doing the presenting, but it's gonna go to town meeting April 7th again. So, it's gotta go to town meeting. And what was this thing? Hedge Road. What's on Hedge Road? Oh, I know what this is. This is the fire station.
Yeah, that's the firehouse, yeah.
The fire station. It's very interesting when you look at the, at the paper, the design. It's...
The other picture's better, because it shows the, yeah, there it is.
Yeah. Well, there's so much wetland there, that there's very little room almost for the building, just about makes it on the spot. This is all wetland. So, they can't build on this. So, they're gonna, they can do some on this, but the building itself is gonna be over here. But it's quick to get out of Hedge Road for, to a fire. So, anyway, that's kind of what the property looks like at the present time. And nothing's, nothing's being built yet.
Campbell, before Ms. Burgess moves on to the next, to the next item on the list here. The, the design of this piece of property to put the firehouse on it has wetlands on it. And they went to, they went to a state agency called CON, C-O-N-C-O-M, CONCOM. And that, that agency verified whether or not those, that piece of property in fact had wetlands on it. So, somebody has a document somewhere in Boston that we probably could ask the question about. Ask the question about North.
Yeah, I think so. The other thing on the, on the fire station, too, is it'll be a lot, it's not gonna be so huge, but it's gonna be big enough so that they're gonna be able to have, you know, two, two good-sized trucks, a ladder truck, a smaller one. There's gonna be a dive trailer and a smaller trailer, place for an ambulance, and, do you remember what this little vehicle was for?
No.
No, okay. But anyhow, so that's the makeup. So, it's gonna, it'll have, then they're gonna have gear rooms and all that stuff around, around the perimeter is where they're gonna have the rooms and the rooms where the guys stay. And on the Sims House, the back stairwell needed a heater, and they're doing the tiles in the lobby. Pretty well, it's pretty well done. The salt shed, they're waiting on the new facilities manager. Main Street Extension Parking Garage, they really haven't done anything much on that. Airport Administration Building, Tom Ma sent an email. It'll, it's gonna, they're gonna be 95% paid. The state's gonna pay $800,000. And it's going out to bid March 15th.
Thank you for all that information. Personnel.
Yes, we have to report tonight, three certificated appointments, eight classified appointments, one leave of absence, and four resignations.
Any questions, committee members? Okay. Leaves?